It is currently six oh two, we'll start the college meeting to order. Mr. Salazar, do we have someone that leads us in the pledge?
Mr. Maya, members of the board, this evening we have students from Rancho Verde and Los Cuates here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And this is Pinera, principal at Palmer, I'm sorry, at Rancho Verde. That's where Rancho Verde, no, no plans to move you ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's, it's here this evening. Palmer's on my mind because they have lighthouse status. But Ms. Pinera, we're here to, for the, thank you for introducing us to students that will lead us in the pledge.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Salazar, good evening. Rancho Verde is represented tonight by Ms. Tatiana Marquez, a fifth grade student in Mrs. Crouch's class. She is the daughter of Lilian and Arturo Marquez. She has maintained a high A average in all subjects since kindergarten and excels in everything she does. She is a cheerleader, plays the violin in our campus string program, a member of our recycling club, a member of our breakfast readers' club, and was a participant in EAE oral reading. Tatiana hopes to attend Stanford University when she grows up to be part of the medical field as a nurse. Ms. Shiloh Jones is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Crouch's class. She is the daughter of Norma and John Jones. She is a natural leader and is always willing to help others while keeping a positive attitude. Shiloh is an A Honorable student, enjoys reading, she participated in EAE oral reading, and absolutely loves sports. She plays basketball for the RVE Raptors and is a member of the softball league. Shiloh has, inspires to become a teacher like Mrs. Crouch because she wants to help others be the best they can be by working hard and never giving up.
Here to introduce us to students from Los Cuates Middle School is Ms. Elma Reyna, Mrs. Reyna.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mrs. Salazar, good evening. With us today, we also have two of our best at Los Cuates Middle School. I would like to introduce Emily Melanie Davila is an eighth grade student at Los Cuates Middle School. She is the daughter of Maria and Agustín Davila. The things she values the most are her family and friends. Emily's career is to be a general surgeon. She loves to go on adventures and explore new places. Emily is told by her friends that making others happy is what she does best. Also with us is Caitlin Capistran. She is an eighth grader at Los Cuates Middle School. She is the daughter of Lisa and Renee Capistran. All her life, she has wanted to help and inspire people around the world because everyone deserves to be happy. In her heart, others come before her, no one, no matter the situation. Caitlin hopes to make the world a better place, one person at a time, by becoming a psychologist. Caitlin Capistran.
These students are here to help lead us in the pledge, will everyone please rise?
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. Ms. Garcia, could you help us with the roll call, please? Excuse me, I've been reminded, do we have parents of these lovely students in our audience? I apologize, that's my fault, thank you. And thank the students very much for helping us out. Okay, Ms. Garcia, I'm sorry.
Mr. Jesús Samaya.
Present.
Mr. Leonel Garza.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Dana Garcia, I'm here, Mr. Mustin Castillo.
Present.
Ms. Darlene Peterson, present. Mr. Ray Faria. Mr. Ruben Trevino, not here. Mr. Gonzalo Salazar, and Ms. Leandra Ortiz.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Salazar, we have some district recognitions.
Yes, Mr. Maya, members of the board, this evening we begin with National Hispanic Scholar Award. And here to introduce our students and tell us about this award is our high school principal, Mr. Justin Stumball.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, as you know, we are extremely blessed with great students across the district here in Los Fresnos CISE. Tonight, I am proud to recognize seven of these students from Los Fresnos High School who have been designated National Hispanic Scholars. Each year, the College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program recognizes high-performing students from across the country. These students have scored in the top 2.5 percent among Hispanic students taking the junior year administration of the PSAT. In addition to receiving a top score in the PSAT, these students had to meet the added requirements of holding at least a 3.5 GPA by the middle of their junior year. Even though the College Board does not award a monetary scholarship with this award, achieving this distinction very often leads to scholarship dollars from universities. I'm going to start introducing the students, and as I introduce them, I'm going to give you their plans of college and their choice of study. Some of them have a couple different universities depending on the financial package that they will be receiving shortly or in the, in the spring. We're gonna go ahead and start with Catherine Maestro Goodrich. Catherine plans to attend the Navy and study nuclear physics. Daisy Paredes. Daisy plans to attend University of Texas at San Antonio under the Top Scholar Program, which she has an interview for next week, and she plans to major in nursing. Josephine Portier. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M Kingsville and study mechanical engineering. Aaron Salazar. He plans to attend either Texas A&amp;M University or the University of Texas and study in electrical engineering and computer science. Ivan Salazar. Ivan plans to attend either Sam Houston State University or the University of North Texas and will study computer science. Aaron Solis. Aaron plans to attend Texas A&amp;M Kingsville and study music education where he wants to be a band director, as he told me today. And one student who couldn't be with us tonight is Kevin Benavides, but these are seven of our best and brightest at Los Fresnos High School. And again, I'm very proud to present them as National Hispanic Scholars.
Will the parents stand up and be recognized? They, our students should be looking at them and thanking them, thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, this next recog, I will lead the next recognition. Better? Ms. Swatner is so down to earth, she would be just fine if we said, "Come up here, here it is." But I'm not gonna do that. And here's why. Ms. Swatner graduated from the University of Texas with a bachelor's in psychology. She was a litigation paralegal for fifteen years before deciding to pursue education as a second career. She joined Los Fresnos CISE as a permanent substitute in two thousand two, and she became a certified, she became certified that same year and taught business courses at Los Fresnos High School for five years, as well as being a CTE department chair and a sponsor to various student activities such as BPA and UIL. In two thousand eight, she became an IT for the Office of Academics where she established a euphoria as the student management system, housing data, and curriculum for the district. Uh, she completed her Masters in Educational Leadership through Lamar University in May of two thousand twelve. Also in two thousand twelve, she became assistant principal at Palmer Laxa Elementary, where she served for three years prior to accepting the principal position at Vesaca Middle School in May of two thousand fifteen. As she progressed in the district, she saw amazing things happening by and for students who come from profound circumstances. She also saw the need for more students to have these opportunities happen, happen for them, and that many lack the leadership skills needed to advocate for themselves and their families. So in January of two thousand fourteen, when she was accepted into the cohort number six of Lamar University's Educational Leadership doctoral program, she focused her research on whether or not using a transformational leadership model, such as the leader in me process, on a campus would transform students and staff into leaders. The results of her research became her dissertation. She successfully defended and entitled, uh, and entitled it, "The Influence of Implementing the Leader in Me at a Title I Elementary Campus." She received her doctorate in educational leadership this past December, and we are very proud of her. This is an inspiration and a role model for us, for leaders in the district. The Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gonzalo Salazar and District Administration are proud to recognize Dr. Elizabeth Swatner for working to achieve a higher level of proficiency in the field of education. Dr. Swatner, congratulations.
Congratulations, young lady.
We had listed one more recognition for, on tonight's agenda. Coach Brown and I initially agreed to recognize the swim team, and, because we still have...
Can you, do you have time? Just wait just a little bit, please. Thank you.
But we qualified one student for state competition and one alternate, and so in light of that, we preferred that that student be in the pool this evening practicing, uh, and Coach Woods along, alongside him. So we'll bring back the swim team recognition at the March meeting if it's okay with everyone. But I wanted to explain the reason why they are not here tonight.
Thank you, sir, you wanna go to district reports, please?
Uh, Mr. Maya, members of the board, we present to you the monthly reports. Uh, these are routine reports we bring, uh, we bring to you periodically. I wondered if you have any questions on the information we have included in the reports.
Thank you, sir. We're in a public audience, we had, uh, some information that came to us and there was really no way of getting on the agenda and we thought it of sufficient importance that, uh, I'm gonna read the policy on, uh, public forum. You wish to address the Board of Trustees during the open forum portion of today's meeting, please print your name, they've done so. Complaints and concerns, uh, for which other resolution channels are provided shall be directed through those channels. These complaints include complaints on the following subjects: employing complaints, termination of employment, career ladder, appeals, student complaints, removal of, uh, of, to alternative education programs and expulsion. The Board President determines that a person has not attempted to resolve a matter administratively, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy for attempted resolution before bringing the matter to the Board. Complaints against specific employees of officers of Los Fresnos CISE shall be heard in closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Title V, Section 551.0741 and 2. If your topic concerns complaints against specific employees or officers, please note that, uh, note that on this sign-up sheet. Well, as you can see, that's our podium, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Salazar has signed up, uh, to discuss something.
We did find a mechanism to be able to make this announcement here today, even though it's not on the agenda, and it won't take, uh, but a matter, few minutes. You heard me make reference when recognizing Dr. Swatner, uh, that she, her dissertation was done on the effects of a leader in me program being implemented at a school with a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students. Um, several years ago, I was approached by, um, one of our administrators, this is Jerry Gomez, saying she had learned about the leader in me program, and, um, she was on fire. She, she, uh, she was talking very fast, wouldn't let me get a word in, um, and she was sold on the idea that in Los Fresnos, we need to educate the entire child. Not just the reading, writing, and arithmetic, but what are we doing to prepare kids to be, to speak up for themselves, to be leaders in their home and at school? Um, of course, uh, true to form, I expressed concern about how, a funding mechanism, how were we going to fund such a program? Uh, and she would not take no for an answer. She was such a believer and kept banging on my door, asking for what she felt as an advocate for kids was right for the, the children at Palmer Laxa. Um, so she started with the end in mind, we found a funding mechanism, mostly so that I could focus on other things, um, because she was very persistent, um, but she was right, it was the right program. She started with the end in mind, um, she put first things first, and she sharpened us all along the way. Leadership is the art of getting people to go where they might otherwise not go. Today, uh, we had a, at an assembly, um, at Palmer Laxa, this is Gomez announced that Leader in Me has given, uh, awarded a lighthouse status, which is the top, uh, performing level of this, what is not an event, but a lifestyle. Children are exercising the, uh, the seven habits of highly effective people, um, and we know that it wouldn't have happened if it were not for the leadership of Mrs. Gomez and how she got everyone to believe that there is an entire movement, there's an entire campus working on developing the leader in every child, that we couldn't be more proud. I sent out my first tweet ever, a responsibility I take greatly, I have eight followers, but I was very happy, uh, that that was my very first tweet, and I'm so, so proud of you. Congratulations, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, young lady, as having someone at my house that sits at my dinner table, uh, and, and tells me the things that go on every day, and noticing the change in her, uh, I can personally attest to the, the things that I see in her and how she treats her younger brother as a leader. So thank you very much and congratulations. Okay, now I didn't mean to keep you from dinner, now that, we, we just wanted to make sure that you were here so we could do it properly. Well, on to consent agenda, we have two items on consent agenda as we've done, uh, in the past. If we have a board member that would like to pull one of the consent agenda items for discussion and bring it up later, we can do so at this time. There being no item, neither one of the items that need to be pulled, I will take a motion, uh, to approve consent agenda as posted. Mr. Castillo?
Mr. Maya, I, I make a move to approve the consent items as written.
Just a second. Mr. Farias? There's a motion in the second to approve consent agenda, has, has been posted. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Moving to action items, under Roman numeral nine, number one, discuss and take action to approve, to add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by TASB Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for the TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 106. Is there a motion? Mr. Farias? Thank you, sir, do we have a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
Peterson, discussion. Just a reminder to everyone before they vote that, that we, we are a little bit out of what we normally do because we have posted it in a manner where we will, there won't be a first and a second reading, and we will be adopting it tonight, if that's the way it goes. Okay, any other verification that might be needed or anything like that? Okay, I have a, a, uh, motion in the second to approve, uh, TASB Localized Policy Up, uh, Manual Update 106. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous? Action item two, discuss and take action to approve the addition of alternate number two, which is a timing and scoring system to the existing contract of CSP number fifteen dash sixteen dash thirty-two indoor practice facility for the pool and weight room, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and sign the change order. Is there a motion? Mr. Garcia?
I move for the addition of alternate number two.
Just a second. Mr. Castillo? Discussion. There being no discussion, I have a motion in a second to approve alternate number two, the timing scoring system for, in the existing contract of CSP number fifteen sixteen thirty-two indoor practice facility pool, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and sign the change order. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous? Before we go to item three, I'm, I meant to ask her, uh, before, but ask legal, can we refer to these items as listed on the agenda, ma'am, or do I need to go through every dot number and, on all those items? As listed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Okay, item number three, under action items, uh, discuss and take action to approve bids, offers received from the tax resale held July 5th, 2016 for the, uh, referenced property struck off the Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions, and to approve resolutions authorize, uh, the tax resale of items as posted and identified as items A through F, do, is there a motion? Yes, ma'am? My concern would be that that's not the way we posted it.
That, that wouldn't have any effect, we don't have any problems at all coming back. And, I, I'm glad that I caught it, 'cause I, I did think that was a concern as well. Um, if you all wanna table this until the next meeting, we don't have any problems at all coming back.
I wanna, well, tape, I, I don't wanna get to that point, if we don't have a, it's not a properly structured, uh, properly stated, posted action item, so, uh, I don't know if it's within my jurisdiction to just, uh, since we didn't post it properly. Because if we go through the whole thing of reading and table it, it's a different action.
Oh, I'm, we can bring it back at the next board meeting, ma'am.
Well, we're, we're thankful that you, that you caught that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and so then I'll, I'll, we can get the, the next, uh, date.
Thank you. Item, item number four. Number four, under Roman numeral nine. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2016-2017 school year, Higher Education Coordinator, is there a motion? Mr. Castillo?
I'm, I move.
Thank you, is there a second? Mr. Farias? There's a motion in the second to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations, uh, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving superintendent's personnel recommendations for the position of Higher Education Coordinator, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous? Is our new Higher Education Coordinator in the audience. Congratulations, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is to consider a Level Three Employee Complaint, uh, Appeal of District Employee Amguarado. Amguarado has requested that the Board hear this complaint, appeal in closed session therefore pursuant to the request and in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Uh, the Board will hear the complaint in closed session, at this time, we will move into closed session, it is... Oh, for real estate, well, we're going to hear this, we're gonna go into closed session, and we're going to hear the Level Three grievance by our employee Amguarado and also to discuss real estate matters. It is six thirty-one, we're going into closed session. It's seven fifty-six, we are back in open session. Back on the record, ma'am, we're good there? Back in open session, return from closed session, it's time now, like I said, it's seven fifty... I'd like to remind the Board that at this time, having heard the Level Three Employee Complaint, the Board has several options. Number one, the Board may vote to grant the complaint, which means that we believe the com, the complaint is valid and that the grievance should be granted, the relief requested. The Board may vote to deny the Level Three grievance and affirm the decision of the administration, which means that we believe the administration acted appropriately and that the grievance should be denied, the relief... should be denied, the relief requested. Or if appropriate, the Board may vote to grant in part or deny in part any or all of Level III complaint or requested remedies. And finally, the Board may take no action. If it takes no action, by the end of the next regularly scheduled Board meeting, the administration decision made at Level Two is upheld. At this time, do I have a motion?
Sir?
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, I just want to go ahead and show that I do recuse myself from the grievance.
Duly noted. It's on record at this point. At this time, do I have a motion concerning the Level III grievance of Amguarardo? There is no motion at this time on that, on grievance concerning the Level III Employee Grievance of Amguarardo. At this time, are there any announcements?
Mr. Maya, Members of the Board, we do have three announcements. On February 15th, I'm sorry, Friday, February 17th to Sunday, February 19th, Los Fresnos PRCA rodeo is held in our community. On Saturday, we'll have students, all of our campuses will be represented in the rodeo parade, that's Saturday, February 18th, and on Monday, March 6th, is, that is the date for our next Board meeting. There are several other upcoming events, and we place those at each of your locations. You can take that, place it on your fridge, and come out and support our students. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
This meeting is adjourned, there's no further items on our agenda. Thank you.